Okay. So, the first item tonight, we're going to call upon our city manager and she will give us an update of flood recovery. Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Lisa. So, I'm going to be making a short presentation here at the beginning, but then turning it over to Jeff Arthur, Tracy Winfrey, and Jim Reader of Open Space to update you with a little, a few pictures about what's been going on in their particular areas, and then I'll end it up. So, it's been three weeks since the flood, and we're in a period now where we're beginning to transition from response to recovery. We do have a few, what I would call, still emergent projects that really need to get done urgently, but very soon we'll be fully into the recovery process. So, last week you saw that we had done the preliminary damage assessments. Those were required by FEMA, and our estimate at this point is that our damages would be $49 million. Honestly, I think that's probably going to go up as the floodwaters continue to recede and we get to move some of the debris that's currently blocking our view of some things, but right now, that's where we are. What we need to do now is work with our insurance carriers and FEMA so that we can secure the funding to restore and repair the community. So, what that requires us to do is to pay the initial upfront costs until disaster assistance funding is available. And we're lucky, we're in a strong position particularly compared to some of our neighbors. The council has created a policy in which we have 15% reserves in the general fund, and some of the other funds have reserves even as high as 25%. So, we are in a good, strong position to start the recovery and then do our documentation to get reimbursement from FEMA as well as hopefully insurance. So, one of the things that's really important is that we really need to follow all the FEMA requirements to maximize the dollars that we're going to get back. So, the first thing that we did is some research in talking with other communities that had experienced disasters such as this, and the one piece of advice we heard consistently is get somebody to help you. So, we did an RFP process according to the rules, and we hired an adjusting firm called Adjusters International that has a lot of experience in major disasters. They're currently working in Superstorm Sandy and have quite a good background. So, they've been on site for several days to answer some of our questions and help us get ready for upcoming meetings with FEMA. The other thing that happened this last week is that we had the applicant's briefing on Friday, and we needed to have a council member come with us, and Georgia volunteered to be there. There were probably 75 to 100 people in the room from all over the county, representing all sorts of different agencies, from Ditches to the City of Lyons to Boulder Valley School District, and of course, the City of Boulder was there and county as well. So, it was a well-attended meeting. Then today, we had some special training for department directors, and later this week, our staff will have some training on the FEMA rules and requirements to get us started. And I just want you to know that we are 100% committed to do the most comprehensive job that we can in the area of disaster assistance recovery funding. So, before I turn this over to staff, I have two last things. The first is to tell you how great our volunteers are. Last weekend was National Public Lands Day, and we had hundreds of people come out and volunteer, both in North Boulder Park and Scott Carpenter Park. They did a really amazing job. They were not just from the City of Boulder, but from other places as well. And it's really helping us repair some of the things that we're doing. The Open Space Department is working with volunteers as well, and we have a website, and they're contributing, and Parks is contributing to the website. So, we've got projects for people to do if they will get on the website, and later Tom could tell you what it is because I'm not remembering exactly what it is. Then, the second thing that we've been really worried about from the beginning is debris management. So, as you know, the last time we were here, you authorized curbside collection, and we went out for bid, and curbside collection is now well underway. It started last Thursday, and the city's been divided into four different zones, and they're, they finished Zone 1 and Zone 2 on the first pass-through, and they're on to Zone 3, and will probably start on Zone 4 later this week. So, by the end of the week, the first pass-through of all the zones will have taken place. So, it's, it's great. And then on Friday, our contractor, and that contractor is Swingle out of Denver, will begin its second pass at the debris. The thing that we want residents to know is it's really important that they get their debris out this weekend because the debris pickup is going even faster than we thought that it would. So, they need to get it out by their curbs, and when they come around, they'll, Swingle will pick it up. And then, beginning on Monday, we have some good news that Swingle will also be collecting mud and silt from city streets. If, if the residents will put the flood-related mud and silt out on the streets, Swingle will begin to collect that, as well as any flood-damaged appliances. And the thing that I keep saying, and I'm sure you're sick of me saying it, is that it has to be flood-related. And so, you may wonder, how does Swingle know if it's flood-related? They have monitors or auditors that travel with them or head of them and mark the debris as to whether or not it is flood-related or appears not to be. So, we've had instances where people have done some landscaping, and they put their landscaping mulch or whatever it was out there, that's not flood-related, it didn't get picked up. So, these auditors are in place, and they're doing a great job. And anytime we get a concern that somebody's material was not picked up, we refer that to our lead zero-waste department, and they follow up to make sure that it wasn't missed inappropriately or, you know, by accident. But then, they also talk with the residents and explain that they can't just clean out their garage. So, that's how it's going. So, as of last night, curbside collection had collected 427 tons of material, and then you'll recall that for a period of time, we had the collection sites, the debris collection sites. There, we collected 1,060 tons of material between September 16th and 22nd. So, one thing to say about it is our community has gotten after it, really cleaning up well. We've got a lot of work ahead, but we think we've made significant progress. And here tonight, to talk about the specific areas of progress are Jeff Arthur from Utilities, Tracy Winfrey from Transportation, and Jim Reader from Open Space. And first up will be Jeff Arthur. Jeff?
Is it appropriate to ask a question now of you, of your part?
Sure, because Jeff needs to get his slides up. Oh, there they are.
Okay. A couple of things. Received two phone calls today, people that I didn't know, about the pickup and how great the people were in explaining what they could take and not take.
Oh, that's good to know.
So, that's, that was good. Number two, I wanted to impress upon everybody from the FEMA meeting, I mean, they are, they are ready to write checks. I mean, and the faster we do the work, the happier they are, which I felt. As I remember, there's a bonus, Jane, for faster service as compared to dragging it out too long.
So, my closing comments are going to be about doing it well and not necessarily fast. There is a bonus in the debris collection area if the Superstorm Sandy legislation can apply to us, and we're not yet sure that it can. But that's why we got on the debris so fast, is that we were hopeful that we could get that bonus. But, and with the bonus, it's not really a bonus. It means that you'll get a higher percentage of reimbursement. Instead of 75%, it would be 85% if we get it done in time. But we're not completely sure that it applies, and that does not apply to all the other work that we'll be doing. So, I have a few closing comments about that.
And then, one more in relation to the picking up the silt or the mud or whatever we're going to call it. That doesn't just go for residential ed as well for our commercial folk?
I don't know the answer to that, and I'll have people in the audience maybe think about it and address that at the end of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, members of council. I'm going to just provide a brief overview of the status of our utility systems. As Jane mentioned, we're in the process of shifting from emergency response into recovery. And it's, it's been a long three weeks, but we're starting to turn the corner on that. You know, and a lot of that for us means shifting gears from some of the all-hands-on-deck and continuing services contract work that we've been doing to getting some of the major stuff out to bid and figuring out which things we just need to get done to stabilize infrastructure and which things we can go through full processes on. We're also starting to turn the corner a bit from a lot of the data acquisition we've been trying to do, recording high-water marks, debris lines, into starting to sort through that data, and that will also be a long process, but we're starting to turn that corner. So, I was going to kind of, as you know, we have facilities from the divide on down to the far side of the city, so I was going to start at the top and kind of work our way down. So, on the source water side, you can see a pretty good-sized slide up to the left there. So, you know, we had some impacts even as far up as the watershed, but our dams are in good shape, our reservoirs are full, which is generally good. We had one that we'd been trying to drain to do some work on that is now full, so we'll have to reassess that work. But in general, full reservoirs are a good thing. I think I mentioned last time, we were able to get a helicopter and do aerial inspection of our pipelines that are hard to get to, to at least make sure we didn't have anything that was an imminent danger there. We'll need to go out and do ground inspection, but that's going to be a much longer process. Water quality in Boulder reservoirs starting to improve. Just to kind of give you a sense, this isn't Boulder reservoir, this is Six Mile Reservoir, which is the one right next door to us. So, the good news is they gave us some water. The bad news is it wasn't particularly clean and kind of stirred things up, but the reservoir's starting to settle out, which is good.
I'm sorry, where's Six Mile?
It's the reservoir right next to Boulder reservoir.
Oh, 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 yeah.
So, basically, it breached and spilled across. So, the feeder canal from Carter Lake is still offline. We don't have a definite timing for that to be back on, so the good news is we were actually able to bring 63rd Street back online today treating water from Boulder reservoir. So, that's a huge relief. That's been off for about 19 days now, so that is very positive development. Downstream of the city, it doesn't actually have a function in anything currently, but Wittenmeyer Ponds, which you'll see in the future CIP, is an area that we have planned to make improvements to, is to do an in-stream flow program in South Boulder Creek. There's a lot of damage to that, and we'll have to reassess that project, and probably the scope of that will need to change just based on the damage to that. Move on to hydroelectric. That is Boulder Canyon Hydro. Fortunately, it's worse than it looks. That facility is back online. We're actually, I think, producing about 4.5 megawatts, and it's actually, it's only rated for five, so it's pretty unusual to have it cranking at that rate this time of year, so we're pleased with that. All of our other hydras are back online with the exception of Oradell, which was actually off prior to the flooding for some mechanical electrical work, and we're not actually putting a whole lot of water through that part of the system right now anyway, so.
So, Jeff, you said it's worse than it looks?
I'm sorry, it's better than it looks.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, it's, it's been a long week.
It's only Tuesday.
I hear you.
So, that, yeah, so that was actually from our security camera, so fortunately, no one was in there during this. But, you know, we definitely took on some water, but everything held up, and it's, it's actually performing really well, so that's a definite relief. We did have several of the hydras on and off over the course of the event because they were off the grid or because we couldn't get to them, or there was some issue that needed to be field-checked. Overall, looking good in that area. So, I'm going to move on to water treatment and distribution. So, Bataso is fully operational. We're still obviously working through issues with access through the canyon, because obviously that's how we get staff and chemicals and generator fuel and things like that to that facility, and that was particularly dicey through the flood event, and we were fortunate to hit some narrow windows with key deliveries. But at this point, we're working with CDOT and State Patrol, and we've had reasonable success getting things there when we need to, or just planning ahead a little more than we would. So, we've been treating about 11.5 million gallons a day out of Bataso, which is what the demands have met right now. We're throttling that back a little now that we have 63rd online. You know, the only real operational issue we've had is it's a long way from Gun Barrel to Bataso, so that we've, we've had to do some hydrant flushing and things like that to make sure we're pulling enough chlorine into the Gun Barrel area, but with 63rd back online, that should correct itself pretty quickly. I mean, nothing that dropped below regulatory levels, but we were just keeping a very close eye on it, given the distance. So, 63rd, as I mentioned, came back online. That did lose power during the flooding. That does not have a generator, so we were out of luck there, and when we tried to bring it back online, the turbidity and kind of just the amount of dirt in the water in Boulder reservoir wasn't treatable, so we've had that off. We decided to drain everything and clean it out, but we were, and we had some electrical issues due to the outage that we've had to repair, but we're, we're back online there, so that's a big relief. The water treatment, or I'm sorry, the water distribution end of things is one of those things where we're still doing some emergency response work. So, those pipes you see in the picture are not ones you actually want to see. Those are two 16-inch transmission mains that deliver water from Bataso to the city, and they have been carved out of the bank at a number of locations, so we have a contractor doing emergency repairs on those. But we do have another pipeline that comes down Sunshine Canyon, so all our eggs haven't been in that basket, but definitely is a concern to have things exposed like that. So, the good news is through all of this, we maintained system pressure, we maintained chlorine levels, we didn't have to go to boil water, which was, just given some of the impacts we had, were just a huge relief, because you can see from the photo, we had things that were dangerously close. We've only had one water break since the flood event. You know, we're crossing our fingers that as the weather changes, we don't see more, but in terms of the distribution system, I think we, we lucked out there. We have had some minor issues with communications to some of the storage tanks. Our access to the storage tanks has been pretty impaired. So, along the edge of the city, there are treated water storage tanks, and most of the access is, this is to Booton Reservoir, this is to Chautauqua Reservoir. Kind of just give you a sense of, you know, the pipelines underneath there held up fortunately, but we have a lot of work to do to dig out and get access to those facilities. Shift gear to wastewater treatment. So, that facility was protected by a flood berm. It held. We're very fortunate there. It's fully operational. We had had some concerns last week with just the amount of floodwater that was getting there. It has biological processes that rely on the wastewater for food, and we were getting a lot more floodwater than wastewater, but fortunately, our little microbial friends have stepped up, and they're, they're doing what they need to do to treat our wastewater, so that's also a relief, just given what we're seeing for flows. We felt like there was a very real risk, risk of losing our ability to, to treat wastewater, and fortunately, the plant held up throughout. So, the, last week, I think we talked about the $100,000 step screens that treat the influent in the first stop through the process. So, the vendor was able to piece together one good one from the two broken ones, so we got that back in place last Thursday, which is a big help, and now we're going through the process of cleaning out the various debris that got into the facility, but that was definitely a, a nice thing to have taken care of. We also, I think, talked briefly last, there's an issue with one of the lids on one of the digestion processes, and we'll need to wait till flows are down lower to be able to address that, but that's a fairly significant amount of damage. So, I'm going to switch to wastewater collection. So, this graph shows you what flows to the plant did over the course of this event. So, if you look over on the left, we were at around 13 million gallons a day. You can see, over the course of this, it spiked up and stayed, we believe, probably well above 50 million gallons a day trying to get through the system. And this was definitely a huge impact both to the facility and to the collection system. You know, and that basically represents stuff other than waste. People didn't start, you know, using the wastewater system more because of the flood. That is all floodwater, groundwater, people's sump pumps, people's floor drains, potentially displaced manholes, infiltration through pipes, infiltration through manholes, you know, any range of places, and the inundation was just so widespread that any place where water could get into the system, it did, and in some places, it got back out as well. So, we're working on some frequently asked questions to put up on the web because we're, we're obviously getting a lot of questions, and there's a lot of engineering detail, and we're trying to find the, the right mix of stuff that is technically accurate but simple enough that it makes sense to folks. So, we hope to have that up in the, in the next couple of days here, ideally in the next day or so. So, we are down to about 16 million gallons a day this morning, which is still quite a bit more than we're putting in the treated water system, but it, it looks like the water table is slowly dropping back down to normal levels. And a lot of what we've been seeing is crystal-clear water. You know, it's not creeks flowing in, it's just there is so much water around those pipes and manholes that it's just continuing to seep in any place it possibly can. You know, and really, it's kind of, it's, it's, at the, at the peak of things, it was kind of like there was a big traffic jam on the interstate, that all, the whole city minus Gun Barrel was trying to get through this one last stretch of pipe, and nothing else was moving. And when we finally were able to, to get the infiltration inflow down enough to get things moving, we actually didn't have a whole lot of backup calls after that. Once, once those levels started to drop, we put out a notice asking people to let us know if they still had problems, and there really hasn't been much. We've cleared a few areas. Early on in the storm, there were some places, like in Table Mesa, where there was a lot of dirt and debris that got in, but in, in general, it appears that a lot of the issue was just hydraulically. There was just so much water in the system that it just couldn't take it. So, last, I guess it was Friday, the 13th, we had initially thought that we had lost a section of this main interceptor sewer. That's the biggie that handles most of town. It turned out that that one was just somebody else's pipe that had stopped in a coincidental location. We subsequently found this one, where Boulder Creek had broken out of its banks and knocked down a couple levees, and if you can see in the background, that's all supposed to be buried under 10, 15 feet of dirt and had a river flowing perpendicular to it. So, that gave us a pretty good scare. We were able to build an embankment to divert the water back in Boulder Creek, which is harder than you would think. And subsequently, we put a sizable concrete cradle around that to stable it. But if that line had blown out, we would have basically been discharging all of our effluent directly into the creek, so that was a, a major concern.
Yeah.
So, the other thing that happened out there, and I don't know if I have a photo of it. There was so much pressure on the system down there, we actually started getting sinkholes above that pipe because it was squirting out through the, the joints in the pipe and washing away the soil around it. So, we were, you know, dangerously close to losing the whole system on that end of things. I'm going to switch to stormwater. So, this is a, this is a manhole designed to collect local drainage, and this is typical of many that were entirely full of dirt and debris. So, this is the system that basically keeps the, the street dry during a two-year storm event, five-year storm event, depending on whether it's residential or, or commercial, but that's at least the design, and those were filled solid. So, the good news is, due to the, the work of our crews and the gracious services of some folks from the City of Broomfield and some contractors, we've actually got through about 60% of these already and vacuumed them out and cleaned the lines. So, that's been a top priority because with those clogged, even a little bit of rain would totally wreak havoc, so that's been a, a big priority that we've, I think, have made an impressive amount of progress on in a short amount of time. So, I'm going to shift to the major drainage ways. This is up on 4 Mile, and you can actually, if you look real close, there's a manhole on the bottom of that pile of sand. So, we have just masses, massive amounts of dirt and debris. And I know this isn't terribly legible, but it gives you a sense of just how many creeks there are and how they are spread out through town, from 4 Mile to the north to, you know, we've talked about 2 Mile and Wonderland and Goose and Boulder Creek and Gregory on the hill and South Boulder Creek. All of these had major flood impacts. All of them are going to need major work, major debris removal, and we have a lot to do just to try to stabilize those before we start to get into spring. And at this point, we are shifting gears because these are ones where the reimbursement is going to be really important, dotting our i's and crossing our t's with the federal, federal regulations and the core and whatnot. So, this is stuff that we're going to have to slow down, catch our breath, and make sure that we, we go after that sediment removal in a systematic way that, that we're eligible for reimbursement because we're talking about some huge costs. And then, the other thing that we're focused on, I mentioned briefly, is, is doing that analysis. So, we were able to get contractors and consultants out to get a lot of data. The crowdsourcing thing is up, and it looks like people are starting to add info to that, but figuring out what can we learn from this? What happened? How can we update our maps? Where do things work? Where do they not work? And that's going to be a multi-year process, but we at least, I think, for the most part, hit the window of getting data while it was still fresh, and, and we will need to assess that and prioritize. So, that in a nutshell is the utility system as it stands today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, Jeff, thank you. That was really good. I, you were talking about the sediment collected in the drainpipes and the storm, stormwater collection, and you said you had gotten about 60% out to date. So, how much longer will that take to remove all that? I mean, it seems to me that would be a pretty big job to get all this out.
Well, and, and it is. I mean, and I'm hoping in the next month or so, we'll, we'll get the bulk of that behind us because it is, it's, those handle the small storms. If those are full and we even get a small rainfall event or, or snowmelt, it has potential to have impacts, so that's, we'll keep cranking on it till we're done.
Thank you. I'm impressed by how fast you guys have actually gotten stuff done.
It's a lot of trucks and a lot of people working a lot of hours.
A lot of dedication.
You'll believe it when you see the bill.
Yeah. Thanks.
Wait a minute. She gets the bill, not us. Let's be clear about this. Casey?
Great job, Jeff. I know that this is a lot to handle. And if you answered this already, I apologize because I didn't hear it. The, I know we're trying to get FEMA to cover most of this, and maybe this is a question for Jane. Is that at the 75% or the 100%? These costs that Jeff's talking about?
It's all 75.
Okay, okay. I thought something was, all right. So, will that come from reserves or something else?
So, the initial costs will come from reserves, but remember, we've got different funds. So, the general fund has a 15% reserve. The utility fund have their own reserves.
Right.
And Open Space has their own reserves. So, they'll start drawing from their reserves, and then we'll reimburse ourselves through FEMA reimbursements.
Because with, I, I mean, maybe this question is premature, but stormwater costs are part of our, the fees that we set in our water bills. I mean, would you anticipate that at some point, we'll be, we'll be covering those costs through higher fees down the road?
I think it's probably way too early to say what we're going to do as far as that goes, and a lot will depend on the reimbursements that we get because we may get so much of it back that we won't need to do it. But remember, we've got a long-range plan about utility rates where we know that we've got improvements coming in the future, and we're building up savings for those. And so, I think that one of the jobs of the utilities department in the next year will be to completely reexamine all of the utilities that we have and determine whether or not our, our future capital improvement program is, is where we want it to be. So, it's way too early to tell. We'll be looking at all of that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Bacon?
Jeff, my question has to do with the riparian area along Boulder Creek through town, and I think because it's, a lot of it's greenways, it may be under your jurisdiction. If there's somebody else to ask, let me know, but I do see the memo and the preliminary, preliminary damage assessment, and I'm wondering if that includes restoration of riparian areas, particularly along Boulder Creek, but also whether it include, I know we've got constructed whitewater, some areas of Eben Fine Park by the library just east of Broadway, and I'm wondering if, if those areas, which I understand to be damaged, are going to be, if, if they're part of the preliminary damage assessment, if they have been, the cost has been at least preliminarily determined, and also what the sequence, the timing and sequence might be for restoring these wetland, these wetlands and...
And I, and I don't know that the estimates are def, are not necessarily at that level of detail yet, but generally, those features actually have a function as well. So, some of these, you know, areas provide storage. We're walking over the bridge, and there used to be a drop structure there that's not there, and while it looks like a waterfall, it's actually taking energy out of that water to avoid impact. So, yeah, we'll, we will absolutely, as part of this, need to restore that because if you don't have a, a stable, functional channel and ecosystem, it doesn't function for flood control purposes. Whether that's stuff we're able to do immediately, or if, if we need to kind of do some upfront triage and get things marginally functional and then do some enhancements and restorations later, that may be the case. I mean, it's, it's going to be tough kind of with the time of year it is to get things revegetated, so a lot of these, we're just going to have to do the best we can to stabilize them so they're ready to handle spring.
Some of the, the whitewater that we've created through actually stream channel construction and placement of rocks serves a purpose to it, enhancing the fishery in Boulder Creek and increasing the aeration of the water and that kind of thing. Is this, I, this is on the city's radar, right, to take a look at those areas and see the extent to which they were damaged?
Yeah, we're not putting any concrete trapezoid channels out to bid. I can, I can assure you that. Yeah, I mean, and again, it, it may be that this is a multi-year process to get things back the way they were or better than the way they were, but yeah, our, certainly, our intent is the... intent is the long-term would be to have these be functioning, healthy ecosystems, not just drainage ways. It's just a question of, it's probably not going to happen by April of next year, but it's, I, we haven't made a shift in how we look at our drainage ways, put it that way.
And with, for people who have a special interest in this, what's the right department for them to stay tuned to, to find out about these riparian improvements or in-stream improvements?
Well, so the Greenways program is actually jointly funded by utilities, transportation, parks and rec.
Open Space.
Open Space.
So Annie Noble is the coordinator of that program, and the Greenways program, I believe, has their own separate website. But bigger picture, we'll be continuing to get information out because there's just going to be a ton of restoration works on all the creeks, whether they're part of the Greenways program or not.
Thank you.
Figure out how to keep people in the loop.
All right. Suzanne, and then me, and then this side of the table.
Well, so later in our packet, it talked about a hundred percent of the stormwater system pipes being damaged.
I think that was more about...
Does that mean the vacuuming that needs to happen?
Yeah, that's the inspection and maintenance. So basically, we're going out and we're, we need to look at all of those. At least, initial indications is that we're, we need to look at every pipe in the system, whereas the wastewater collection system, it looks like we probably, at least our initial assessment, is that we could be more strategic and that we don't have to try to do four hundred miles of pipe up front, which would be a pretty daunting task. So...
Okay, so everything needs to be assessed, but not, so the, we're dam, it's not like it doesn't only need to be replaced?
No, I mean, I think that the good news is what we're generally seeing on both the stormwater system and the sanitary sewer system or wastewater collection system is that while we had some major operational issues, fortunately, we didn't see much in the way of actual structural failures. And the only real big pipe failure we had was the wastewater collection system up in the Spring Valley area, and it got wiped out. And fortunately, it's a small enough section that we're pumping around that, and those people are in service, and we're building a new line. You know, and we may find other areas as we get out and look, but in terms of, you know, pipes being damaged or destroyed at this point, it's, it looks like things were overwhelmed, but at least weren't structurally demolished.
Okay, and I guess, I know that a lot of people experienced some unfortunate backups as part of this event. But on the whole, does the system function like it's supposed to, or are we going to make changes to the flow, you know, the fifty, the fact that we had fifty, I don't know what the unit was, but fifty as opposed to thirteen coming in? Is that something we fix, or is that just what happens when you have an unusual event like this?
So on some level, I think it's just something that happens on, when you have an unusual event like this. I mean, if it, it was a flood, not a rainstorm, and it was well beyond what you would typically design for. I mean, we have separate wastewater collection and stormwater collection systems, and they're, you know, you're not designing the wastewater system to treat stormwater. But we absolutely are going to look at areas where we might be able to improve components or systems. What's particularly challenging with this one is with the rainstorm being over the whole area, you just have this massive drain system collecting from everywhere. You know, and we go out and we spend about half a million dollars a year lining old pipes to help keep water from poking in. But I'm sure as many people saw in their basements, if it's wet enough on the outside of a concrete wall, the water will flow through it. And, you know, we've got concrete manholes, we've got pipes with joints. We just had water come in and, I dare say, just about everywhere. So, you know, we'll have to look at where our dollars are best spent, and it may be capacity, it may be, you know, different things out in the collection system. But we certainly aren't going to, we're not going to, you know, just accept it as it is, but we're, it's going to need to be a detailed and thoughtful assessment because you could spend, you know, so the money we spend lining pipes, I think, gets us a couple miles a year out of four hundred miles. So...
Gotcha.
You know, it's not as simple as we could just say, well, next year, we're going to replace the collection system or add five million gallons a day of capacity to the plant. It's, you know, those are, they're major investments, and we'd want to make sure that we were going to get a legitimate return on investment. And whether we, whether there's even a financially viable way to do it for a storm this scale is...
Okay. Thanks for the context. That's very helpful.
So Jeff, one thing you said, actually, you might repeat, because I know some people are confused about whether our stormwater system and our sanitary sewer system are combined, as they are in some cities. But in Boulder, they are, at least in theory, two separate, two completely separate, essentially sealed, systems.
Well, I wouldn't say sealed on the wastewater collection system. I'm sorry, on the stormwater collection system.
Stormwater, right.
It's deliberately, so if you're out in the street and you see the openings in the curb and the grates, you know, those are areas where the water is supposed to flow in. Those are designed to collect it, and that's a separate system. And you'll also see the, on many of them, the little label that says it drains to the creek. So if you put something down those drains, it's going into a creek, it's not going in a treatment plant. And that's an important message to remind people as they clean up debris around town as well. The wastewater collection system, there are manholes in the street that are there for access to get to those pipes, which are, you know, in some cases, twenty feet deep. And it's basically a silo with a ladder, and there's a little pipe going in the bottom of it. But those, the openings into that are people's, you know, plumbing, their floor drains, in some cases, things that are connected that maybe shouldn't be. But that system is not intended to collect stormwater under normal circumstances.
And following up on the things that maybe shouldn't be, so I assume, I may be wrong, that some pumps are not allowed to pump into the...
Yeah, so...
...water system, even though I know a lot of them do.
Yeah, so some pumps are not permitted to hook into the sanitary sewer system. They either need to go into a storm sewer, or if there's capacity to go into the yard or landscaping, that's certainly preferable, rather than irrigating to use that water for that purpose. But if it's tied to the sanitary sewer system, you certainly, as many people experience, run the risk of it being a pathway for wastewater to flow back through.
Ah, okay. And then the last thing, which is really a future thing, two future things as you're going to learn more about this. One that struck me is kind of redundancy in the system. So a few places where we came out okay in the end, but, you know, thinking about the future. So the Batasal Water Treatment Plant, where we had power out for probably longer than we expected would be, and probably didn't expect all the roads would get washed out simultaneously. The, you know, Sixty-third Street Plant with both no backup and the turbidity of the water problem, kind of things like that. Are there places where some additional redundancy would actually make sense?
Yeah, and, you know, and there, what's interesting is the things that were already on the to-do list, definitely, the storm exploited those weaknesses in the system. You know, so we've, you know, one obvious one is if we had water in a pipeline from Carter Lake, would we have had the issues with the canal? You know, we don't have a generator at Sixty-third Street, and it only has one power source. That's a huge ticket item because basically, you're talking about, in this situation, you've been talking about powering pumps to take water from Boulder Reservoir up to the plant, and then through that process, and then pumping it into town, which, as you imagine, I mean, to serve the city from just that plant, you're talking about, you know, a massive amount of energy. And, you know, it's a wishlist item. You know, fortunately, though, in a lot of these cases, we made it through because we had that redundancy, you know. So if we had started with one water treatment plant and one pipeline to town, we would have probably been in very different situations because we really got to a point where we were running on one water treatment plant and one feed, starting from, you know, multiple sources and options. So it is, you know, having a diverse range of ways to operate the system is definitely pretty key.
And the last comment, which is really just a comment, which is in my recent travels as I've been out and about, and I've been at meetings, talking, where people have been talking about climate change adaptation and mitigation. There are definitely a lot of people out there who would love to kind of get a case study of what we've done, some of the mitigation efforts we've taken, and how they worked, or maybe didn't work so well as the case may be. Because I think it, a lot of what we've done is a best practices case study, and people are quite eager, I mean, people are finally thinking about this, let's put it that way, all over the country. And they really are trying to learn from each other about some of the things we might have done, or some of the things now we might do. So I hope, I mean, it's not, it's not the first thing to do, but at some point, there's really a lot of interest.
Well, that's the data acquisition piece that we wanted to jump on and not let that slip. So we had, you know, engineering consultants that don't come out with shovels out doing, you know, work that we could have them focused on because they're, at least we have the data, and it's going to take a long time to analyze. But, you know, we're starting to take that data and overlay it on our flood maps and see where things got wet that we didn't think would get wet, see where things align. And in some places, it eerily fits like a glove. In some places, there are things that look a little different. You know, initially, it kind of looks like some areas of town might have seen something that was on the range of a five-hundred-year flow. Other places, it looks like, you know, maybe it was a hundred. In some places, it was, it was less. We, so we're, you know, so the weather service, I think, has sort of looked at the regional event, and we're really taking that down to try to figure out drainage way by drainage way, neighborhood by neighborhood, what happened and how can we prioritize our efforts to hopefully mitigate impacts. We do have a future event, and we have a bigger event.
All right. George and Ken, and, not George, Ken, Tim?
Just very briefly, because most of my questions were answered. I think it is ironic that one of the things that we talked about a few months ago on the budget was to move ahead with the Carter Lake Pipeline, which would give us redundancy at the reservoir plant. And I think I mentioned that Rab in the past had not supported that, but have come to the conclusion that it's a good idea for the redundancy. And we've just seen how we could have gotten burned. Fortunately, we didn't. So that's one comment. The other comment I wanted to make that I think Jeff mentioned, but I want to put a little more emphasis on, lots of people have been blaming the city for, you know, the wastewater backups and, you know, why wasn't the system better? And I just wanted to touch on, I've met with a couple of water engineers in the past two weeks who said that they have seen many residences in the city who are pumping their sump pumps into the sewage system, which is illegal, and who knows how many millions of gallons that was adding to the load that was going down the system and, you know, contributing to the problem of the sewer backup. So that's one thing that people should think about. You know, it could have been twenty years ago, you know, you were putting in a sump pump, and the plumber said, well, you know, you could try and figure out how to put this in your yard, but we could just pump, we could just plum this right in here. How about it? And, you know, people didn't know and said, sure, why not? Well, when it's pumping hundreds and maybe thousands of gallons a day, and you got thousands of those, that's a lot of water. So I think we all need, you know, the city's going to work on its problems, and residences need to think about working on their problems, too.
Yeah, no, I agree, Ken. I know that frankly happens in my neighborhood. I don't know exactly, yes, it's illegal, but I'm not sure how you find them or what you do about it. But, yeah, enough sump pumps pumping enough water into the system certainly can make a difference. Tim?
Jeff, my question is, you were talking about all the sediment we have and debris. Where's all that going? Does it have to go to the landfill? Do we have a place where we can put it? I mean, the magnitude of the cleanup seems enormous. So I'm just wondering what's happening with all that stuff?
So I think, and I'm looking to Jane, I think a lot of the initial stuff is getting landfilled. I think as we get into the creeks, we'll have, you know, because just a lot of the stuff that's being cleaned up now is mud and whatnot in the street, and we don't necessarily know what's in it. As we get into doing sediment removal on the creeks, hopefully, we'll have a, you know, enough time will pass, we'll have a better ability to assess whether it's suitable for something else. There's a whole lot of sand in Violet Park, so that might become a beach volleyball court or something. You know, the, it, well, it's really going to have to, it'll probably be case by case. I mean, hopefully, that won't all be wasted and can be put to some other use, but it's going to require assessment.
Yeah, I just can't imagine the tonnage.
Yeah, it's...
I mean, of the mountains that were moved down into, you know, the drainages that came down into town from the foothills. So it would be great if we could figure out a system to take what needed to go to the landfill to the landfill, and then have the other things go someplace else.
You know, and that's, and that's pretty typical when you do a construction project, if you have usable materials.
Right.
So if we need to restore a bank...
Right.
We've got dirt twenty feet away that would be suitable. We're going to move it twenty feet and not truck it in if it's suitable. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff?
So Tracy Winfrey is next to talk about the transportation system.
Hi. I'm Tracy Winfrey, Director of Public Works for Transportation. This section will be a little more brief. I know it's been a lot about the water. We've all been thinking a lot about the water lately and working on responding to the events of the last couple of weeks. I'm just going to give a brief update, really paralleling what you have seen in your memo, your update memo for tonight. You know, as Jeff has described and also Jane has described, we're really working on a number of things at the same time. We're not fully out of response. We have entered into recovery. The transportation system may be more into the recovery than the response than, say, utilities is. But, you know, it is a lot of effort happening at once, whether we're doing assessing of the system, repairing of the system, restoring parts of the system. The debris removal from streets and pathways, we're hoping, our goal is to complete that by the end of 2013. People have seen street sweepers, not just from the city of Boulder, contracted street sweepers. DIA has helped us out. So we've had a lot of support from across the region. So we're looking for some intense street sweeping to be continuing into this month and then not as intense into November. Street repair, we're looking at, hopefully, and there's a big caveat here because we still are assessing the system, but we're looking to have much of the street repairs done by the end of October. The multi-use path system, as we talked about the last time, you know, much of that multi-use path system is along the greenways. It's where the flood was conveyed. They did what they were supposed to do. They conveyed the flood. Now, as the waters recede and we do assessment, it will take more time to recover the multi-use path system. So we're looking at that into the spring of 2014. It, the roadways reopen, pathways reopen. I encourage people to go to theboulderfloodinfo.net for up-to-date information. There's a roadway map there that includes Boulder County roads as well as city roads, and there is a map that covers the multi-use path system. And if you look at those maps, you'll see that, you know, in particular, the street system fared quite well, especially compared to Boulder County and some other communities. We are coordinating across departments with utilities, with parks and recreation, and across agencies and our partners in the community. And we're paying very close attention as we shift into recovery about how we vary, how we document with real integrity for the FEMA reimbursements. I just wanted to show a few highlights of the damage in some areas. You know, some people have seen really the same old Boulder. They go downtown, they head down Broadway, they, you know, they're doing their regular life, and it looks pretty good. And it's great. We are so fortunate that much of our arterial system is in very good condition. We have seen some of these neighborhood areas, neighborhood streets that really suffered some significant damage. This is Seventh Street at Pleasant. This is just north of the Flatirons Elementary School. And here is debris and damage to asphalt in this area. You can see the end of school zone sign there on the stop sign. And what we're doing now is making these neighborhoods accessible. And we're doing it by taking an initial step of clearing debris and putting down road base so that the streets are accessible, people can get to their homes, contractors can get there, we can provide access to schools and so on. And so this is Seventh Street and Pleasant today. And we've coordinated with the school district around access to schools before these repairs, during these repairs, and after these repairs. Interestingly, here's another example. This is Willowbrook Drive. This reflects some pavement damage that happened from the flooding. that happened from the flooding. And again, here's a road base approach. One of the things that we're doing is we're putting down the road base and we're not doing the final pavement, the final surface to these streets, because we need to make sure that the underground utilities are in good condition and that if additional work needs to be done there, then we'll be able to do that work without pulling up brand-new pavement. So we're making sure that we're doing this coordination, whether it's with Excel gas lines or with our water utility, the water and wastewater system. We're coordinating to make sure that people have access and then we do the right repair at the right time. We actually met with our FEMA consultant today who said this was very much the practice, to put down the road base and then assure that everything is in good working order before the final pavement surface is put down. Here's another example. This is King Avenue. Here's some roadway damage from the flooding event. And again, here is roadway base to make this section of roadway passable and accessible. Here is a section, this is Galaspy, where it crosses over Table Mesa. This is a, a significant connector to the Boulder Valley School District system. There's a, an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school that people, many people use this access point to get to the, to get to those schools. You can see that that section of sidewalk is not intended to be flipped over into the roadway. You can see the debris, the sand, and so on. And so by the return of school, by the opening of school, on September 18th, we had Galaspy reopened and even new section of sidewalk poured to provide multimodal access to the schools. So where we can, we are making these connections and, and recovering as best we can, again, in compliance with FEMA. Here is, as I shift to some of the pathway examples, here's the Boulder Creek Path right at the Broadway underpass. You can see that the floodwaters here and the debris. Here's a shout-out to Parks and Recreation, who actually did the debris removal on this section of the pathway. You can see the, the amount of debris is pretty phenomenal. So thanks to Parks and Recreation for doing that. And I actually went and took this picture yesterday.
Thanks.
And it's just a remarkable turnaround that we're able to see in some parts of the system. Another example, this is Moorhead Underpass. This is along Bear Creek. There was quite a bit of flooding in this area. Again, this floodway did its job. And we had some damaged pathway as a part of that. It's going to take some time to recover. We have gotten in there with a contractor and we, here's an example of repairs that were underway as of the 23rd, and here's what it looked like on September 26th. So this section of the Bear Creek Path was able to open. And just as an aside, this is something we've also heard from our consultant, that FEMA likes to see pictures before, during, and after, like you were just shown here of these examples. There are parts of the system that are still closed. Here is Boulder Creek, just west of Foothills Parkway. There's a reason that sections of the pathways are closed and that we have messages out there for people to please use alternate routes. It will take some time. Again, waters are still receding. Debris still needs to be removed, inspections and the work that needs to be done compliant with FEMA to put these systems back in place. Here's another example. This is a roadway example. This is 47th Street out in the Four Mile Creek area. It's right near the Pleasant View soccer fields. So here's an area where this, that's the very front part of that is actually a bike lane. You could maybe see the little bicycle symbol there of that bike lane. Well, you, I don't think you'd want to ride on that right now as that section of roadway is undermined. And so that's something that we're working on today. And so while progress is being made, we're out there, we're removing debris, we're assessing, we're repairing, we're doing our best to get that multimodal system back online. We know we'll be tapping into reserves, as Jane has mentioned. We're also very fortunate that we had the capital bond and the transportation funding for the street resurfacing, the pathway work, the sidewalk repair program. We were able to delay those. We're able to put those on hold because there are some streets that now rate as a zero. And so those become the top priority. So we are able to reprioritize, reprioritize those dollars and get to this repair work pretty quickly. We are working with the leadership team and the consultants to have integrity in our documentation. And I, you know, I still have that caveat of we're still monitoring the system, we're still waiting for the substructure to settle out. And as, you know, temperatures change, we'll want to be monitoring how the condition of the transportation system is over time. And that's my update. So if you have any questions.
Thanks, Tracy. Questions, Ken?
Quick one. Are there adequate contractor resources for this, for, for the whole impacted area? In other words, from Lyons and Loveland Cleardown to us? Is there a shortage of people to do this or is every, is it enough?
Well, that's a good question. And some of it's on a case-by-case basis. And, for example, we needed more sweepers. And so we had a list of private contractors, calling through the list of private contractors until we got to one. We also had offers from other cities. And so we took, you know, we took up that partnership offer from those other cities to bring their sweepers and their personnel in to help us sweep the streets. We actually just heard today that, and we don't know this for a fact, but riprap is being gathered by CDOT, understandably. You know, you see a lot of riprap heading up Boulder Canyon as they're working on Boulder Canyon. So we're actually having trouble getting some riprap for one of our repair projects. So that might be another caveat for some of these timelines as we get into competition for some of these materials and contractors. It, it could become more difficult. Fortunately, we have a, a number of good contractors in the area that we are able to tap into. Yeah.
Well, thank you. George and I have a meeting at the county level tomorrow, and I'm sure you've been meeting with the county folks. I just, I mean, since our damage is so much less than some, than some of the other cities, I would hope we would, you know, not hog any of the contractors. But, but it sounds like, you know, we, we're further ahead, so we can use street sweeping. I, you know, some of the other cities don't have streets to sweep yet, so-
Right, right.
Maybe, you know, hopefully that can all be worked out at some regional level.
We're all in this together. And we've, we've been helping others along the line and others have been helping us. And we will continue that ethic as we move forward.
Casey?
My bud, my questions keep focusing on the same question, which is budgets. But that looks like a lot more than $6 million worth of damage.
It does, but, well, it really isn't. So far, what we're finding does not exceed $6 million. I have to throw caveats out there that we haven't gotten to the, all of the system. It hasn't all settled out yet. It could be less than $6 million.
It could be less. And as things, that $6 million doesn't include sort of buffer for what may come that we haven't found yet.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Thanks.
Anybody else? Thanks, Tracy.
So the next presenter will be Jim Reeder from our Open Space Department.
Hey, there we go. Got my picture. Good evening, Council. Like all other departments, we received a lot of damage in a lot of different areas. Starting off with our buildings, we, we did receive some rain damage. We did not receive any flood damage, but we did receive some, incur some rain damage to six buildings, about, to the tune of about $100,000. So we got by pretty easily on that one. In addition, we have to look at our fences, ag fences. 40,000 feet, linear feet of fence got damaged, either removed entirely, it's not there, or it's not usable at the present time. Our irrigation distribution system incurred about a million and a half dollars' worth of damage to its structures. And we have those catalogued and we're starting to prioritize those. The, the next item up the list is our ecological system. Our, our streams basically received, we think about $3 million worth of, of damage. That's what it's going to cost us to recoup or, or to restore those. Far and away, the biggest, cost-wise, was our, our trails. And I know most, if not all of you, have seen some of the damage to our trails, trails and trailheads. But not all our trails were damaged. Here's an example of a trail that really escaped damage. We have, this particular trail was one that we have put in recently. We designed it, built it, and it kind of just points out that if, if done right, many of these trails will survive a lot of rain and other environmental things to, that go their way. Not always the case. Here's Royal Arch. Here's one that, there, there used to be a trail there. There isn't one there now. We received some level of damage on 93 miles, basically, of our 147, excuse me, 145 miles of trail. To date, we've opened 54 miles of that 145, so about 36%. So we've, we focused a lot on that. We understand the, the desire of the, of the community to get back out into our system, to use it, to recreate. So that's where we've put a lot of our effort. You've seen a, a lot of trails open recently. The rate of trails that will be open will, you will notice, will slow considerably from this point on. We, we've plucked the, plucked the low-hanging fruit, and now we're looking at trail areas or trail sections that may require three to five days of, of trail work in order to get them open. Doesn't mean we're stopping, we're, we're continuing to, to work along those lines. And I want to also say that, that we have put a lot of our staff focused on trails, reassigned seasonals. Some of our seasonals were, were hired to do IPM work, and a lot of that IPM work got washed down the, the creek. So we're reassigning them to trails. And we've, we've done a little bit of that also with our standard staff. However, we do have staff focused on each one of those areas I mentioned before. In other words, we have somebody focused on the damage that we'd have to our buildings, taking care of that, the, the fences, the irrigation, and the ecological damage. One of the things that we're using as, as much as we can is volunteers. Here's the picture of, of a couple of volunteers working on Royal Arch. Heavy work. And we're really grateful for all, all of the volunteers that, all the people have stepped forward to be volunteers. Here's one cleaning up South Boulder Creek, some of the area around South Boulder Creek. And you'll notice that there's water sitting on the ground there and how he's dressed. This particular project was done last Saturday. And if you remember what last Saturday morning was like, it was raining again. But they still got out there and did that work. Another project we had last Saturday on National Public Lands Day was on High Plains Trail, a bike trail. We tapped into our FEMA friends, and we got 40 people out there to work on that trail. And because of that work, we were able to open that trail today. So we continue to do that. And another, another point I wanted to make is that we are also housing two AmeriCorps/FEMA crews. They're in the area, and we had a, a house available to house them. And so they are actually, we're housing them, they're basically a FEMA crew, or two of them, actually. We are also instituted this last weekend some educational tours. These are focused out of Chautauqua. And basically, what we're interested in is getting staff out, or not staff, but the public out to see some of this damage and to explain what's happened and why it might happen again. Here's a mudslide. And, you know, you, you might not be able to see, but there are actually a couple of people standing in the middle of that out there. So it's pretty good-sized. And this is the type of thing that I think most people aren't aware, unless they've been out to the, the system to see it, how massive some of these damages, damage is. Here's a picture of Springbrook Trail where you see in the, in the picture, four different separate slides. Above the trail came down onto the trail. Because of this, we are looking into hiring a geotech, geotech firm, professional to come in and do some evaluation for us, to see what kind of risk we have out there. And, and I think it's particularly poignant because of the accident that happened just, just yesterday. This is a road, well, this used to be a road. This goes into Green Mountain Lodge. And as you can see, it's basically gone. This is the type, some type, one of the type of work, of damage we have out there. We have 10 roads, 10 roads slash trails that are not necessarily this bad, but I think most of you've seen the, the damage at Gregory. That, that's going to have to be completely redone. And Valley Trail at Sinitas, completely, more or less completely redone. So I showed you the first picture where we had virtually no damage. Here, it's basically gone. And in, in all of this, we're going to be mindful of FEMA, because we're going to need that, that reimbursement also. But I want to talk a little bit about our goals. Basically, by November 1, another month, we feel like we'll have our trail assessment complete. As a part of that trail assessment, we will determine which trails may not open for quite some time. We will have trails that we don't open for years, just because of the damage. We will have, we also believe we'll identify some trails that we will eliminate, that we just can't put back where they were. And, and we'll either have to reroute or just abandon. Also, by the 1st of November, we hope to have 80% of our trailheads open. By January 1, our goal is to have 50% of our trail miles open. Once we do that, that basically is our point where we think we can reinstate the commercial and special use permits, which we have suspended at the present time. We just don't feel that the system has the capacity to handle those commercial and special use, uses at this point. And we'll be also working to identify and develop three ecological restoration projects. Along, all, all the way through here, we're going to be tapping that volunteer source that we have. Our goal is to have four volunteer projects a week. We have four planned for this week. We, we've done six to this, to date. We had seven planned. The seventh one got rained out. And we, we anticipate that eventually, at some point, we're going to get snowed out. But we're going to be working real hard until that happens. And so with that, are there any questions?
Questions on Open Space? Casey, Suzanne? Suzanne?
Well, I'll ask the budget question this time.
[laughing]
Because I, I know the damage estimate for Open Space was pretty high. And-
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about, or maybe Jane can, about how much we think will FEMA refund, reimburse some of this and where the initial funding is coming from and how that'll affect other Open Space functions?
Sure. Multi-layered question there. So basically, the, the effect, let me, let me address that first. The effect is that we had two trail projects under contract. One was Anemone and one was Bear Canyon. And basically, we're suspending- and one was Bear Canyon. And basically, we're suspending both of those at this present time. We just don't feel like it's the right thing to do to add more trails when we have such a bunch of trails that we need to fix. As far as where the money will come from initially, it will come with, from within our budget. We do expect, we've met and continued to meet on a every day or every other day basis with the FEMA folks, or the group that we brought in to help us work with the FEMA folks. The word we get, or our understanding today is that, yeah, the trails, the trails will be, the work we do on trails will be refunded or reimbursable. So, we're certainly going to follow all of the guidelines and hope for the best on that, but that's what we've been told that it will be.
Did I catch them all?
You mentioned some of the ditches needing work. Sorry about that. You mentioned some of the ditches on open space needing work, and my, could be incorrect, understanding previously, is that ditch owners or water rates owners, or ditch companies typically paid for ditch improvements or ditch repairs. Is that the case here?
That is the case. In most cases, we are a member or a party to that ditch company, and so, when they, when the infrastructure for that ditch needs to be replaced, we pay our
Our share.
Pro-rated share, yes.
Okay.
And that pro-rated share is what we've reported.
Okay. The estimates in your budget, does that include positions for new volunteer coordinators? Because my understanding is there's a plethora of volunteers, hundreds trying to get on open space to make sure their favorite trail, their favorite climbing route, whatever it might be, becomes accessible. And it seems, what I heard previously, is there wasn't enough people employed in open space to include volunteer, to manage the volunteers. Maybe this is a budget question for Jane, I don't, or, but, but that you couldn't even manage all the volunteers that you had.
So, from a volunteer coordination standpoint, I think we're pretty well set there. We have a couple of people who focus on that, and they're very good. The, that's, to me, that's not the bottleneck. The bottleneck is managing the project, first of all, designing the projects. It's not an easy task. I mean, we have turned down offers of 100 or 350 people to come and work on our trails, because we can't handle that. We don't know what they would do. You know, the project on Royal Arch was very productive, but it was a 10-person project, just because of all of the constraints on where those people needed to be. 100 people could not have worked there. So, the constraint is really going to be in designing the projects, and then managing the project on project day. And we actually have, I think, enough capacity there also. So, the real thing that's holding us back, more than anything else right now, is that design thing. And so, we haven't had a chance, haven't had the time for our trails professionals to get out and really design, figure out, okay, we had a trail here, it's now slumped down, there's nothing there you can really build on, how do we get across that? And we fully expect that we'll be able to do that. And in some cases, it may be a bridge. In some cases, it may be a reroute. In some cases, like I said before, we may abandon that and put a trail someplace else. We'll be able to do that, and we will be able to use these large groups of people. Maybe not 100, but I think that's possible, you know. And the way we have to do a trail project is we'd have to break that up into, if we've got 100 people, we'd probably have 10 different groups. And so, we would need 10 different leads to handle that. And I think within our system right now, we have that. We have some very talented people in our trails program. And so, you know, and right now, as far as going back a little bit to the coordination, with Tom's help and the group from the city attorney's office, I think we're able to manage the number of people coming in. It's, again, that bottleneck is creating the projects.
So, can I add? Jane said, I give you the website. If you go to boulderfloodinfo.net and click on volunteer opportunities, there are several links there. The top one says City of Boulder. That actually, we're doing a partnership with United Way. Our volunteer opportunities are listed. There's currently four projects listed, three parks and one open space. We have plenty of opportunities for volunteers if people want to volunteer. It's a very simple system. Parks and open space have both been great at coordinating with us. So, it's all there. And one of the things that Jane had mentioned, many of you may know, volunteer hours count towards the city's local match for FEMA. So, that 25 percent, that comes, and we already have, I think, over 200 volunteer hours from last weekend. So, we're building it up slowly. We've got a system in place to capture all of this. So, people will not only be helping the city by doing the projects that these folks desperately need, but also by helping the city financially, since that counts towards that 25 percent match.
Yeah, it's been amazing, and, I mean, people have contacted me, how do I volunteer? And of course, I direct them to the website. So, it's certainly not an issue of having volunteers. It's, like you said, an issue of having the projects ready, which just takes time.
We have four for this weekend. Boulder Reservoir, Coot Lake, Sage Trail, and there's one more I can't remember. But they're all around. And so, if folks want to help, we have the capacity. And I think the one at the Boulder Reservoir can take as, almost as many people as can come. I think they were talking in the hundreds. So, they've got, there's a lot of work that needs to be done at the reservoir.
Awesome. Thank you.
Suzie?
Yeah, I'm curious about the trails that you mentioned that you would have to potentially reroute, or maybe even abandon. What is the process for that in terms of making that decision? And does that get processed through the open space board? Because we're basically changing what was on the ground before, or losing it altogether. I'm just curious about that particular aspect of your decision-making.
Yeah, so there's probably at least two different categories of trails like that. Some of, the first category would be those that were identified already in the West TSA that we were going to reroute. And so, those, we would just go ahead and reroute now.
You mean prior to the flood, they were?
Prior to the flood, yeah.
Yeah.
During that, during the West TSA process.
No, that's fine.
So, if you look at the plan, they're already there. And so, it makes no sense, really, to rebuild that trail just to replace it later. And then, there was likely to be some trails that are not identified there, that are so bad that we have to do something different. And the Mesa Trail is one of those, where we actually have a piece of that trail that basically disappeared. And while it's not one that we're looking at this point to reroute, we are looking very strongly at putting in a huge bridge, well, big bridge, at that point. And so, that's a big change from what we had before. So, and that change, along with any other changes that aren't reflected in the West TSA plan already, will certainly go through the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Jim? Okay, thanks very much.
So, before I finish my comments, I have an answer to Georgia's question, which is that the mud and silt pickup is for residential only. And it's because it comes under a certain part of the FEMA rules, that are the early debris rules, and those apply for individuals, so are residents. For businesses, they would have to hire a contractor and haul it to the landfill. So, that's the answer to his question. Then, number two, you may wonder why your city attorney knows so much about the volunteer program. And it's because about two days after the flood, we started getting tons of requests for people that sort of were demanding to come and volunteer, and we didn't have a way to handle it. And I asked management team if someone could step up and do it, and Tom did it. And he's really done a great job, and I'm so appreciative of the work that he's done.
A city attorney is allowed to do that?
Special dispensation.
I have another question. Or are you still going?
I'm going to go a little bit. Okay. So, obviously, we have a lot of work ahead of us, and you can see that our different departments have their priorities set. And I know that you are hearing from community members, as we are, about people wanting to make sure that damaged trails, damaged portions of things that they love are fixed and repaired as soon as possible. So, we are definitely focusing on this goal. The thing is that I have a caution. In order to get the reimbursement that we need, we have to follow FEMA requirements. And those requirements include that we need to do damage assessments. Those damage assessments need to be verified by the federal government. We need to do scopes of work for all the project. And those scopes of work need to be verified by the federal government. And until we get those federal approvals, and then we have to let out some of these projects for contract, we are not able to move forward. Another thing that's true is that even if we move forward, we get the money, we won't know if we're going to be able to keep it until the very end, because at the very end, the auditors come, and they go over all of our paperwork, and hopefully, we would just give them some files, and they'll go, you guys rocked it. But if we didn't, if we haven't followed all the rules, they can take back some or all of the money. And so, it's super important for us to follow the rules and just make sure that we're doing things right. So, what this is going to take is a lot of patience from our community. As Jim said, some of the trails that we have here aren't going to get repaired for a really long time, and people want to get on them. But we have to be patient so that we can do it right. And it's going to need the support of this council, as well as the next council, for us to be patient and get these things done the way that we can. We've got a lot at stake. So, finally, I'm done. We're going to be moving to public comment in just a minute, and then after that, we prepared some draft key objectives for you to take a look at, and we're ready to talk to you about those when you get to that tonight. So, that's all. Thanks.
Jane, thanks for an excellent job on all this, and I know it's a lot to manage. I have one more question, and these guys did a great job of presenting, but one of the categories that was included in the preliminary damage assessment was parks and rec, and it's right now listed at basically 2.4 million. I'm curious, I know the Spice of Life Event Center is closed, and it looks like it could be closed for a while, and there was already a significant backlog of maintenance there. Is, and I know there's a ton of work going on at various parks. So, was Spice of Life, what are the plans for Spice of Life? And it seems to me if that place needed so much work, it can't possibly be in the 2.4 million.
So, I'm going to try to answer, but Kirk is going to come up and stand there and tell me if I'm wrong. So, Kirk, Kirk and the Parks Department has been working with our facilities maintenance group. There were several feet of water in that building, and initially, we were able to go in and make sure that the kitchen works and is available. But there's mold in the rest of the building, and we're doing an assessment. And indeed, there was a lot of backlog of projects there. So, we have just a very initial assessment, and I think that those numbers are reflected in the work that you did?
Actually, the numbers that we put forward do not reflect the Spice of Life, so that's an unknown. And that's, we're waiting to get a further assessment on the actual cost of the damage.
Right. And so, we, we're going to do a much more comprehensive assessment of that facility, essentially to find out what it would cost to fix it, and what it would cost to possibly replace it. So, we need to do a cost-benefit analysis on that facility. It's one of the most damaged ones.
And so, you just stated, but I was curious, which is, because, you know, replacement might be the right alternative if the damage, on top of the damage that already, on top of the maintenance backlog that already existed there. That might be.
Yeah, we have a lot of community groups that are really interested in that facility. And so, Liz Hanson has been working with the Spice of Life folks to try to see if there are ways in which we can accommodate them in another way. So, we've got a couple of ideas, but we're not yet, you know, sure what we're going to be able to do. And in the interim, they're able to operate their kitchen out of there, and some of the community groups are meeting at other locations and then having the food brought there.
And replacement, how much, we don't, do you have any idea about FEMA and replacement, or how that works, or?
No, because, yeah.
That's a whole, whole new bag, bag of tricks, bag of something, [laughing] bag of questions. Okay. So, yeah, that's, that's what I was wondering, because I thought Spice of Life couldn't possibly be in there with, yeah.
It's not included in that.
Thank you.
Hey Kirk, while you're up there, can you give us a one-minute status on parks and what you're doing?
Sure. We had Kirk Kincanon, Director of Parks and Recreation. We had about 40 or 50 percent of our parks damaged related to the storm. We have opened most of the parks. There's about half a dozen or so, excluding the trail system through the creek path that we're working on, Tracy and Greenways and Jeff Public Works on. So, that'll be some significant damage. That'll be a coordinated effort. But we have, there's several areas like Norwood Tennis Courts, they were under five feet of water. They have about three feet of mud in them. Eben Fine Park has about four feet of mud in certain areas. So, the cleanup continues in those areas. We certainly don't have the washouts like open space had as far as most of our trail systems, but we did catch a lot of mud. As you saw, the underpass that Tracy showed you, we were out there with our little vehicle, cleaning that up, helping out where we could. It's a lot of debris, a lot of damage relative to just stuff sitting there. And we actually don't know the full extent of the damage until we get the debris removed and cleaned up. And then, we'll be able to look at irrigation heads, playground structures, benches, all those things that are covered up right now by a lot of the mud that's out there. And then, we'll have a better assessment. And then, as Jane said, working with FEMA going forward, making sure we have intricate documentation on the exact costs, and making sure that we capture the full amount of recoverable funding for that.
Thanks for your good work on getting those volunteer projects coordinated, because I know it isn't easy, and it's been really meaningful, as Suzanne can particularly testify to, for people to be able to go out there and do it. And you guys obviously have the bulk of those projects, so thank you.
Well, you're welcome. And actually, Tom did an awesome job. And then, Jeff Dillon, the superintendent of parks, really stepped up and has just done a fantastic job spearheading that effort. So, thank you.
Nope. This is for, I think, for Jane. And that is, so the $49 million in damage that we gave to FEMA as the initial estimate, is it, is damage to city facilities, right?
Right.
Do we have any sort of sense about damage to personal property, in the magnitude of that? And I know FEMA is reimbursing individuals, some individuals, some amounts for damage. Do we have any sense of the magnitude of that, and how much will be covered in, you know, for the people side of things?
We do not. We don't collect that data. We have no access to it. FEMA has it, and they really don't even have all of it, because businesses really are not qualified under FEMA. They have to go through the Small Business Administration. And so, that's another entity that has more information. We would like to try to get it, but we haven't yet figured out how we're going to do it. But it is on our list of things to try to figure out. We don't have it now.
Anything else on flood issues in general? All right. Thanks, Jane. Thanks to everybody. Really fabulous work. Yeah, a lot of good progress and fabulous teamwork.
We have a great team, great people.
Well, and incredible dedication, so, thank you, everybody.
Okay. So, a little bit late, but we're going to go back.